All right, welcome everyone. Public participation? No, all right. Approval of minutes? Did everybody want to table these minutes so you have more time to look them over?
Yes, I would to table the approval of the minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yeah, can I ask why they're so late? Why we can't get them on time?
They were...
At 11:30 this morning, 11:45. The minutes were delivered to the...
Okay. Because I...
Yeah. I texted Joel this morning that I hadn't seen him this morning either. So, yeah, I will go with that. All right. Hearing nothing else, all those in favor, table it.
Aye.
And then your tables till the 23rd. All right, curriculum report. All right. I didn't even see you sneak in.
I wanted to begin by thanking you all for the warm welcome back to Farmington School District. The first month has been extremely busy. A lot of familiarizing or re-familiarizing myself with the layout of the buildings, the staff members, teachers, even students have seen me in the high school that I had in sixth grade and said, "Welcome back," which has been pretty nice. Assessments, beginning of the year assessments have been completed in all three schools. We've been using the STAR assessment for that. I think every student finally is complete at this point. Teachers administered the test and/or the assessment in reading and math. They were... The goal was to be before September 15th. We had a couple stragglers, so we extended the deadline or the window for a few days, but I think at this point, everyone is accounted for. Students took about 20 minutes to do each reading and math, and we get the data instantly. So, it's very nice, and there's many different ways teachers can look at the data. They can run reports. Miss Allen did a little session with Valley View showing them the multitude of reports they can pull for various reasons that they would need the data. It usually gives a skill score, a percentile, and then within that score for each assessment, it breaks it down into sub-skills so that not only do the teachers know what level students are at, they know which are the weak areas within each student. There's four or five for language arts and then four or five subcategories for math too, so they can really work to create interventions, which is right now at Valley View and Henry Wilson, they've already looked at their data, formed intervention groups, assigned them to people who would be best suited to serve that particular strand of weakness. And I know at the high school level right now, they have the... This is their first year with the enrichment intervention time, so they're about to embark on creating some systematic interventions there that serve the needs of the assess the data provided by the assessment as well. They're not quite as far. They're still working on, you know, getting students where they need to be and making sure they're not wandering through the hallways since it is instructional time, so students aren't used to that. So, soon that will be taking place there as well. We'll also give the assessment again mid-year and end of the year to see growth. And then data teams I know at Henry Wilson are meeting every other week actually to modify their groups at this point. So, tomorrow is their next data meeting, and I'll be there to see, you know, what kind of shift they decide to make as far as groupings of students, targeted areas for practice, and that type of thing. Also at Henry Wilson, they're working on understanding by design, which is approach an approach to curriculum planning that is kind of reversed from the typical. Instead of starting with an activity and then deciding what the outcomes will be, it's reversed. So, teachers start by saying, "As a result of this unit that I'm going to create, students will master these three standards at the end." And then they work backward from there. Okay, well, how can I assess those three standards? And then after they decide on an assessment, then they create their learning experiences that match versus picking a topic and then pulling skills out of the topic. It's, you know, reversed. They're working with a consultant, Andrea Reed, who will be helping them through this process, and she comes once a month on, I think, the first, second Tuesday of every month to work with them there. They're focusing on incorporating vocabulary regardless of the subject area, regardless of the grade level. She's asking them that they have a focus of vocabulary just because that's a common weakness across multiple grades, across multiple subjects. Real-time is up and running at Farmington High School. I've set up this software, or it's a web-based, though it's not really a software, but it's enriching students. Teachers were introduced to this, and they've been actually very successful at implementing it. We're working on getting it so that we can incorporate enrichment too. Right now, it's mostly focused on the intervention side, but we're also, by the time the next or I think, by the time the teachers meet with the data at the high school, we're hoping to have teachers volunteering to give enrichment opportunities as well. So, those students who don't necessarily need an intervention have an enriching opportunity to do instead of going and receiving extra help. So, we're picturing this menu of intervention, or sorry, enrichments that students... Okay, well, you can't stay, you're technically not going to stay here and use it as a study hall here, or all those other things you could be doing with this time. What would you like? So, kind of a menu in a sense of things students can do. For example, on, it was last Monday actually, students could sign up for an enrichment to see the robotics presentation given by Prospect Mountain. So, T-shirt, or students just let their advisors know they were interested in that, and they were signed up through the software. So, it's a way to then account for students too, so that they're not just, you know, walking to places they would like to go. And they have attendance lists. They mark them present, active if they're participating in intervention. They've marked them present, inactive if they're not participating. So, we can pull reports to see students who are constantly participating and active, kids who are not active, and coming up with ways to make that time better suited for them.
Now, you said the Prospect Mountain, that's a one-day thing.
Mm-hmm.
Are you thinking like a writing process for a full, like while the rest of the kids are in enrichment? So, because enrichment's a daily thing.
Right.
I mean, interventions are daily.
Yep.
So, would the enrichment be like a program, or is it something that they can choose daily?
It would be something they could choose daily. I know, thinking, you know, the art teacher might offer an enrichment opportunity specific to a skill, an art skill, a comic book drawing type thing. In the past, these are things I've experienced, or in the past too, we've had, you know, we've had mathletes, and the mathletes meet during enrichment, and they do, you know, kind of a, an advanced math that they wouldn't necessarily be getting in the classroom. Some of the teachers did say, you know, every Tuesday and Thursday, I do this, and other times it was, "I'm going to do this for these two weeks," or showing of a certain video and discussion and responses to it, or documentary showing, or something like that. I know Mr. Shagnon has been doing some stuff through there already with enrichment, and have, that's, you know, time where his students have been coming out and working on the film and that type of thing. So, it could be kind of used in a multitude of ways.
Are these activities tied to any standards, or just whatever?
They probably will be at some point, yeah. But we haven't, yeah, we're working on getting, giving them the idea of developing a menu, especially the, you know, UA Unified Arts, you know, which they could offer, you know, things that students are, you know, of high interest and that type of thing. And then eventually getting to, maybe, maybe a classroom teacher might run an intervention a certain portion of the week, and then would elect to run an enrichment another portion of the week of some sort.
Is this also the time of day when students can dedicate planning projects for extended learning opportunities?
Mm-hmm.
Would this be considered as an extra class for, because you mentioned volunteering, that they would volunteer to do it. Would it be considered an extra class for the staff?
It's not, or it's, I think, falls within their five...
This is the fifth teaching block.
It would be the fifth block, okay.
So, so if they weren't doing an enrichment, they would be doing an intervention, so it would be, you know, it would be considered a teaching block for them.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. Thank you. Famy report.
You have this in your packet. I was anticipating I would have someone here to present that, and I don't see her here.
Yeah, it's kind of not even, I mean, I know who it is, but it would be nice if it was signed.
Right. So, certainly I can hold this until the next meeting if you'd like, and you can have questions.
Move to table till the next...
Table? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? All right, committee report, budget committee.
Oh, no, I forgot. Oh, I forgot the...
You want a table?
There were adjusted dates.
There were adjusted dates?
So, I, we had our town budget committee meeting last week and brought the proposed budget schedule to the budget committee, and there were motions to amend a few of the dates that passed. I can tell you the very first date that we had asked to be set, which was the date that our adopted budget is due to the budget committee, not a meeting date, but the date by which we're to have the file over to them. And so, by split vote, the committee amended that to November 21st.
Do you have that scheduled in front of them?
We can pull it up. I was going to say, what we could do is, once you have that, you could share it back out with the board.
Yeah, the other ones were, I think, one was pulled in a day, excuse me, and then the last, the third of the dates that we needed to set with them was adopted.
Was on the 18th, was it? Or was it on the 11th?
Was presented on the 11th, September 11th is when we first reviewed it, September 18th. The board, because it's a governing body, we said those dates worked for us, and so budget committee reviewed it last week.
Okay, so, I have it here.
Find the first round.
So, which date was the one that had a question mark next to it?
It was December 13th, presentation to budget committee, town chambers.
Okay, so that one is shifting one day, either in or out.
Okay. And then January 3rd, the public hearing was a question mark as well.
And that one's fine.
Okay, all right. And were there any others that, or those were the only three that...
Those were the three that were, a motion was made and...
Okay, so... So, the public hearing date was fine?
Yep. I'll confirm for you that December date for the presentation.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I forgot that date.
Will we be completed with our budget by the 21st to have it?
We will.
Can I ask, was that 21st date before our proposed...
Yes. Yes, we had proposed the 27th. And so, we'll have to look at the schedule and see if that's doable. I mean, it's going to put more pressure on this board to get things done, probably mean an extra meeting within a week to get...
What was their rationale for removing it?
That the allotted time was after Thanksgiving and not enough time for them to review before it's presented to the budget committee by our staff.
And it would be presented, we had November 27th for the presentation of the 13th, so...
Two and a half weeks.
Two weeks.
Two and a half weeks was not enough.
Wasn't enough.
All right, Stratford Learning Center update?
Went to the executive board meeting this, two weeks ago. I am now the assistant treasurer for SLC as well. And so, I have signed my paperwork for that. They have updated their format just a little bit as far as board member present, board member participation, because we're now nine districts and trying to figure how they do quorums and all of that. So, they're looking to have board members participate in a, in a kind of a large presentation and activity probably in the spring rather than in the fall, the way they've done in the past. So, they're going to try to do that perhaps in conjunction with their Top Chef cook-off so that there's some inducement to get folks there.
Okay.
And Kevin is going to keep us up to date on that. Kevin Murphy is the executive director of SLC. But in the meantime, we'll be meeting monthly, and we've just reviewed basic, here's the start of the school year for them and where we are, so. So, that's pretty much our update, but mostly looking at the...
As the person that's on that...
Right, it would be the spring before he would be expected to be there, so. Because more and more board members are unable to attend, and so they're looking at it probably being an evening so that it is more accessible for more people.
Okay. All right, and I emailed Angie on the Health and Wellness Committee, so they just had a couple of policies that they wanted to look at, so I kicked it down to the policy committee.
Policy committee, okay.
Anything, senior class trip?
This is kind of a pre-request. The senior class is looking at their options. One of the options that they are considering is a class trip to Florida and wanted me to at least put out to the board to see if this was something that you would entertain before they pursued it too much further. They have some possibilities that are relatively low cost for what the trip includes, but they also want to make it as accessible to as many students as possible. And, but they didn't want to even go down that road and put everything into it if it was going to be, "No, you're not going to Florida." So, I told them that I would do a pre-request and see if that's something that you would say, "Yes, go ahead and look to see what else you can find there," or if it's something that you're feeling they've bitten off too much, then we can scale them back, so.
I think Florida's fun, but I don't know how accessible it would be to everybody, you know? What's the price point that they're looking at?
I think the price point right now is in the 500 range. So, again, and that's, I don't think that that's hard and fast. I think they're just kind of initial feelers to see if that's even something they pursue, so.
I know. In the past, we've gone to Florida with the senior class. It hasn't always ended happily. But it's a different class, it's a different group of...
You know, the drama is apart from the trip, so that's, I mean, you can have drama if they go to Rochester. So, that's not the issue.
And...
I know each class is different, and each, you know, they can be very close, or they can be very distant from Rodley going on there. But last year, we approved whitewire rafting trip of Maine because it has to come to the school board because it's in the state, just, you know, so people know why we even entertain these things. So, if they could find out either from last year's class advisor or some, you know, recent grads as to why that ended up getting canceled, I heard it was due to low participation, they could learn from that when they're putting together their proposal. But I say, go for a proposal, but if they could address something like accessibility, keeping the cost down, what their plan is, that'll be part of whether or not we approve.
Then maybe pull their class to see who could go.
And they've, they've done some of that initial, but they wanted to just see if it was even a possibility before they went too far down that road, so.
From my point of view, I guess I'd like to see some information on the past several years, how many, well, how much the cost was for the trip, where they went, how many people ended up going, how much got subsidized, you know, how much money they were able to make for other people, how that got dispersed. Make a good argument for, for doing it, because if they're just going to cancel, then nobody goes anywhere.
Which is how they planned the trip, most of the seniors will...
Could go to.
Okay.
I would too.
So, do you have an answer?
So, go through lots of the plan, with the plan and lots of information, and here's some of the things that you're going to be asked when you bring it forward, so make sure that you have this information.
I mean, what would we look for for a percentage of participation? I mean, 20%?
I'm thinking 40%. Close to half. Am I too aggressive on that?
I think so.
No, I think that, I think both of those are low. I'd like to, I'd like to see how many people are interested in going, and how many people actually go, actually go, depending on, and what their factors for not going would be. Is it they don't want to go to Florida, or they can't afford it?
What's their threshold, their minimum number to go for them to hold a trip?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Cost effectiveness.
I will pass those along, thank you.
Girls golf.
This is just more of an FYI. We, and you may see on the manifest, we have a girls' golf team now, and while there is a, typically, a new team comes to the board, we're not looking at a, an issue of a separate coach, but at the tournament level, there is not a co-ed golf, and we do have a student who is, was looking at being eligible for tournament play, and so, we did go ahead and create the team so that we, and the team creation is much cheaper than a Title IX issue. And so, just, but by way of information so that you understand if suddenly you see two teams listed, that's why, it's still under the same coach and still, but needs to be a separate team in order to compete.
And is it just one student?
I believe at this point, it may be one at that level.
Maybe it'll open up to more.
Moving forward, it may very well be more. So, I would love to see it expand.
So, do you, do you need us to do informational?
It was more an informational if you suddenly see, "How come I only see one golf team? That's why, because."
Okay.
Just letting you know.
Good, good job.
So, we're very good. All right. Good donations.
Yes. We've had two donations come forward for the robotics team. One is a promise of $1,000 pending our grant funding, and another is a check for 50, and so I need to have those accepted. One was from a family here in town, and one was from the in-laws of a staff member who got excited about what was happening.
Excellent.
So, would love to say thank you, and just, but any donations have to be formally accepted by the board, so.
Do you have a motion?
Move to accept both of them.
All right, any discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Aye, you unanimous.
That was easy, Mark.
All right. No, the big one.
The big one.
It's a DOE MS-25.
Let me see here. Oh, I'm on the wrong meeting.
Those, you want to use mine, because I'd really rather not use it at all.
There are three copies, so you could each look at a great one.
Oh.
How bad it is, nothing fun on it.
I'd like to pull up the end-of-year, oh, it's on the...
I didn't have it locked.
End-of-year budget documents, financial reports that you presented in August. I think it was August 21st. Yes. Okay, well, they can start by presenting.
Okay.
So, so from that August 21st report, I didn't pull it up on my machine, but I can say that we did do several check runs that brought our balance, remaining balance on our budget after covering a small shortfall of revenues, which I, I'm talking in approximation, approximately $23,000 in revenues, so that we had unspent monies of $281,056. That balance takes into consideration discussion and resolution with Chartwell's. So, after that $281,056, we do have, on page one, you'll notice, page one, line 30, reserve for amounts voted, and that's the $100,000, $100,000 to establish the heating system. So, that $100,000 is deducted from the $281,000. Then what also is deducted is the voters determined to hold back 2.5% for retained fund balance. That figure, it's based upon the district assessment of last year, 16, 17-year, plus the statewide property tax, and it's 2.5%, so that comes to $174,062.
Just that line item is $174,000?
Right, that's on page, page one, line 32. Under column F.
We don't have line numbers or columns.
It's halfway down, it's at the bottom right here.
Page one, it's going to be in blue.
Oh, I see it, unassigned fund balance retained.
Yep.
Yes.
So, then that means that the amount, remaining amount to go to the tax rate is $6,994.
I think the unassigned fund balance, we already have some in there from last year. Does this go in in addition?
What it does is it, it basically rolls out, and then this is a new calculation. So, it's not like you're, you're taking last year's amount of $166,000 and adding to it.
So, so that $166,000 then goes to the town, though, correct?
Yes, because it's not used.
And so, when you look at what's being returned to the town on this past year's money, it's the $6,000 and change.
Right.
But the 166 that was unused last year also goes back.
And that, I would like to get a clarification. I've been calling DRA to see, well, what is the document? Show me the document that, that supports that.
So, that there's... Because we can only retain one year's worth of 2.5%.
That's correct.
And so, it's either that amount goes back and we retain this, or we retain the difference and that part goes back. So, either way, there's more going back than just the six, but on this report, that's why.
So, we're looking at 172, 170-ish?
Yes, depending upon which way that goes.
The 174 plus the 6, 994.
No, she was, so the 166 from last year plus the 6,000 or so is roughly 172 and change.
Okay.
Which was more along the lines of what we had discussed, but that's, and this is why, and so when you pull that out, it looks like it's not, but there's that swap that we're still getting which paper it goes on.
Okay. Anybody have any specific questions?
I have to go back to the minutes from August 21st, because the number that we discussed was being returned to offset the tax rate was the number prior to this 2.5% emergency fund.
That's correct. I think I had said $180,000.
Yeah.
So, this $174,062 is basically just, sits, sits there on the balance sheet. It doesn't go towards the tax.
So, did we do this last year? Did we do the 2.5% last year?
We, I think last year was the first, was that the first year?
You did.
And that's...
In 2014, I think it was your first year.
Okay. And then, and this is where we're still trying to get...
I don't remember this conversation ever happening before.
Yeah.
The, the fund balance being returned.
And that's why, if I can just say, that's another reason why I did call DRA, that even though the voters say, "Yes, we want to retain the 2.5%", I also was wondering, okay, every year, what's the board, school board's role for making that decision? I'm, I also was wondering, okay, every year, what's the board, school board's role for making that decision?
So if we go back to last year, when we returned the money, was it the difference between what was left in the fund balance plus? Or we didn't return it last year?
Last year returned, it was 166, I think, 310.
Okay.
The year before was zero. And I think the year before that, 2014, I think that was the first year that it had actually gone into place. I think it was 116,000.
So what, Penny, what you're asking is, how was that returned last year?
Right. How was it, when we gave money back to the town last year?
It's not in the form of a check.
No, no. I know that part. The question is, the returned money from the un, the fund balance. We didn't have a conversation about this last year at this time. So where was that in last year's? Did we just refund the difference and just added that in there?
No, it would have been, maybe if I could just show you, it was on, it was on this. It was also reported as 166, 310.
And this is last year's DOE return?
Correct, right.
Wanna see last year's?
Because there was one year where we returned back over $300,000 very recently. So is that the number prior to netting off the 2.5%?
Let me just take a look at my report again, because that's from last year. Yes, because what they do is you, you take from the, the DOE 25, you take the, let me just, right. So our unassigned fund balance last year, now unfortunately, this is in PDF and was approximately $628,000. Of that 166, 310 is the 2.5%. And then we also have $50,000 that was put into a, the busing capital reserve. So that's where it came down to that $300,000 figure that you're thinking.
That was returned last year.
Yeah.
And that all shows in last year's DOE 25, okay. Okay. Bless you. Come bless you. I'm gonna have to issue a formal apology to the budget committee because I reported to them the number prior to the 2.5% emergency fund. So where on here?
But if the 166 is going back, we're not far off that number.
Right, but we weren't taking into account the 166 last time we talked. That wasn't something, we were at 180.
Okay.
182.
And what is the mechanism at which we report to, our school treasurer reports to the town clerk? Is there, is there a form that the DRE requires that we share?
Not that I'm aware of. There's a, a form that when the formal tax rate setting process starts, it actually does not include the treasurer. It's just, it's just a form that they provide to me that ties to this form here for the 2.5%.
Stan, do you have any questions?
And typically, when does the DRE establish the tax rate?
They've actually started doing that this week. So that the rates get set and then bills get printed and it gives people 30 days.
When do you think that'll be done for us, seeing as we're only giving them this MS-25 this week?
I haven't seen who's actually on the list and how, how that part goes. We just also received our revenue figures for next year as well, worksheets from, from the state. So I don't have an idea of when we're actually in the, in the line, where, when we're actually in the queue. I think once that everything gets reviewed and there's, you know, the group that looks at it, I would think it's within 10 days or so.
Yeah, we just received our catastrophic aid figures over the weekend.
Was it higher or lower than we anticipated?
A little bit lower, but not hugely lower. Like most things, they're not funding it at 100%.
Do we want to move on and sign these by the end of the evening? Or do you have more questions?
Yeah, do have one more question, if you don't mind. So you mentioned $23,000 in shortfall of revenue?
Yes.
Where would I see that in one of these reports?
Well, that figure, this is the actual, so this doesn't compare budget to actual. So it actually doesn't show that part, but the last budget report.
And the encumbrances didn't change, right?
Pardon me?
The encumbrances didn't change since August 21st?
We did do several check runs. So yes, actually, the encumbrance is reduced. We wouldn't be, you know, purchasing new items after June 30th. So I think that we, we had an encumference figure, what, 241,000? And so we peeled that back and cleaned that piece up as well.
What are, what are we holding for food service right now?
129.
129.
That's what that is.
So that's potential for going?
It is potential for going back as well. If, if that gets cleared, then that would be released back. But at this point, we're still waiting for some documents. Discuss later.
You just want to be able to explain these numbers. So when, when we received the end of year general fund report, the total encumbrances were 415,913. So if I add up the amounts voted and the reserve for encumbrances of 112,000 that are still showing on here.
So included in that $400,000 encumbrance was, I had earmarked under fuel because we had a savings of fuel. So that was 100,000. We wanted to be, make certain that we had that. In that 400,000 encumbrance should also be the food service dollar that we just talked about. Another piece that we had to get reserved, resolved was the, what we owed another district for our vocational placements. We were going through and verifying and we had to do a rebilling because we owed less.
Could you give us an example of, under current liabilities, other payables of $75,000? Just wanted to.
There were, let's see. Other payables would be the electricity bill. We would, you know, the billing would be in July, but for June's usage. Then we also had to pay the water and sewer. Again, that was for the second quarter of the calendar year. Things like fuel for the buses, the final billing. It would be just an example of a couple of those.
Thank you. Thank you, appreciate it.
Any old business?
Just a, a help needed from the folks that are on these committees. We need to schedule our next policy committee and strategic planning committee. If we could do that sometimes, we just get it on, on the calendar, that would be great.
And for policy, are we looking at Friday?
Friday's still open for you, Stan, for policy?
It depends on the Friday.
Okay.
All right, that works.
That's it? Do you have any old business?
I don't.
Okay. Out there?
That, that's kind of the catch-all for, that's the, and we forgot to put on.
No.
Although typically, that's not a, that's, that's only if it's an emergency other, it's not just a.
Public participation? All right, our next meeting is on the 23rd of October. Right here.
Same time, same channel.
Thanks for coming. I will entertain a motion for motion non-public under RFA 91A, colon, 3, 2, A, B, and C for nominations and resignations.
I will move that.
Second.
Motion by Stan, second. All those in favor by roll. Here in non-public.
Thank you. Thank you.